September 13, 2010, Troy City Council meeting. We will be provided with an invocation this evening by Mayor Pro Tem Wade Fleming, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise, Wade.
Let us pray. Lord, we just love you, and we just thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Father. We just thank you, Father, for creating everything, for creating life, for creating this world that we live in, Father. We just thank you for this beautiful country that we have, Lord, and we just thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy. We just ask your protection upon those who are defending these freedoms around the world, at home and around the world, Lord, and just pray for their safety, Father, and their well-being, mental and physical, Lord. And, Father, we just thank you to each person here tonight, each family represented. Be with this meeting, Father. We know that everything you do is in order, in an orderly manner, and perfect. We just pray that this meeting will be conducted in an orderly manner, Father. We'll just give you the honor and the glory for it. Forgive us while we fail you. These things we pray in your precious and your holy name, Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wade, Mayor Pro Tem Fleming? Mrs. Bartholomew, may we hit the roll call?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Howarlek?
Irwin?
Here.
McGuinness?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
Quorum present. Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilman Martin Howarlek at the special and regular city council meetings of Monday, September 13, 2010, due to being out of the county.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen, that we excuse Councilman Howarlek from the special meeting and regular city council meeting due to being out of the county. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
No.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Irwin?
No.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. This evening, we have a rather special proclamation that we are going to present to the Rotary Club President, Bill Cowher, and the Rotarians, Eileen Halsey, and Ian Anderson. This is Patriot Week, September 11 through the 17, 2010, and you will note by the proclamation of the importance of this week to all of us. So I'm going to go down to the front to present, and if the Rotarians would come up, please. And I see Susan Price is here, and as you know, her husband, Bill Price, was founding member with the Rotary, one of the original members. So of course you should be here for this. And you're going to present it, right?
Yeah, right.
The Rotarians should be presenting this to us instead of the other way around. And I said, I think we're in this altogether, so come on up close. But if you come around here behind me or next to me on either side, then the audience can see all of—come over here. We'll do a boy-girl, boy-girl, because it's important that they see the faces of those so involved with us, and we thank you. Proclamation for Patriot Week, September 11 through the 17, 2010. Whereas the history and first principles of the United States of America should serve as the cornerstone of civic education, in great reverence to the victims of 9/11 attacks, we acknowledge that American citizens must take time to honor the principles, founders, documents, and symbols of their history. Whereas the events that led to the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the delegates of the Constitutional Convention on September 17, 1787, have significance for every American and are honored in public schools across the nation on September 17 as Constitution Day. And whereas revolution, the rule of law, social compact, equality, unalienable rights, and limited government are the first principles upon which America was founded and flourishes. And whereas exceptional visionary and indispensable Americans such as Thomas Paine, Patrick Henry, John Adams, John Marshall, George Washington, Abraham Lincoln, Frederick Douglass, Martin Luther King Jr., Elizabeth Cady Stanton, Susan Anthony, Thomas Jefferson, and James Madison founded and advanced the United States. And whereas the Bennington flag, work of Betsy Ross, American flag, the suffragist flag, the Union flag, the flag of the state of Michigan are key physical symbols of American history that should be studied and remembered by each American citizen. Now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council does hereby proclaim September 11 through the 17, 2010, as Michigan Patriot Week in the city of Troy, Michigan, symbolically beginning this celebration on September 11 and concluding on Constitution Day. Be it further resolved, the city council calls upon the citizens, businesses, nonprofit organizations, and schools in Troy to recognize and participate in this extended holiday by honoring and celebrating the first principles, key historical figures, founding documents, and symbols of America, so that they may offer the reverence that is due to our free republic. This is presented this 13th day of September, 2010, signed by myself, all the members of city council. Thank you. Do you wish to say a few words?
We are honored to receive this proclamation. The Rotary Clubs in the area have chosen as a portion of our service, which our moniker is service above self, part of our service is for people to appreciate what we have and what we have in this country. We would like to see this build and build year after year, where there is a week, which is a miniature civics lesson and a reminder for everybody in this country of where we came from, why we are here, and where we can go. Thank you very much. On Wednesday of this week, I hope you're all invited to the Rotary Club of Troy. We meet at Wednesdays at noon at the Bank of America Building in their executive dining room, and we'll have a recently naturalized citizen who will, from the heart, tell us what it really means to be an American. And we're also going to give everybody a quiz on the same questions he was asked to gain his citizenship, and if we fail, it's going to cost you $5. So we'd love to have you all there to add to the coffers. Thank you very much.
You may have noticed that our sound system has been updated so that all of you can hear better, and we can too, so it is very nice for all of us. Next, we go to—there are no carryover items, so next we go to public hearings, and we have an establishment of an industrial development district for 1462 East Big Beaver, and I believe that Nina LaCary, our city assessor, will be presenting for staff.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Is this thing on here? Is this—
You could hear it when I was moving.
Actually, we have two districts tonight and two exemption certificates being applied for, and as is the policy of the council, most of the presentation will concern—be presented with the districts, because you can't grant the abatement without establishing the districts first. The first one is for Metro Technologies at 1462 East Big Beaver, as the mayor mentioned. They intend to invest about $809,000 and will add three new jobs to the existing five jobs that they have. Now, both of these companies qualified under the old policy before the policy was upgraded, and they do not have any real property to abate anyway, so we decided to go forward with these. Later, next month, we'll have two more companies under the same scenario, and hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have three more companies that are appealing, and they will be applying for real property abatement as well. As I stated, they are going to invest about $809,000 and add three jobs. They qualify just under our guidelines for five years on the exemption. That's the recommendation from staff, is that they get the five years on the exemption. Their total taxes for the new investment would be about $34,000, of which almost $11,000 is city taxes. So as you can imagine, they'd be saving about $17,000 on the abatement, and about $5,435 of those dollars would be city taxes that they would be saving. We do have representatives here from Metro Technologies, with the original owner and his managers here, and they could answer any questions you might have about the business. Staff is recommending the establishment of the district, which would lead to granting the exemption. I would not have anything more to present to you on exemption itself, and I can answer any questions you might have on this particular item.
Council, do you have any questions for Mr. LaCary before we open the public hearing? Hearing none. I'll—thank you. Open the public hearing. Is there anyone here which is to speak on this item? I note that the petitioners are here to answer questions. Mr. Peters, did you wish to speak on this item? Come forward.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I would just hope that—I know we're under stress again, but I would hope that we won't be penny-wise and pound-fullish here, and I would like to see it be—I want to say environmentally friendly, I guess, and hopefully that, you know, we're not just throwing this in just for—you know, just because we need the money. I don't—I think we should be long-term looking on this in our city, so—I like to look at some of your cars out there, too, your green car.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to speak in the public hearing here? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, return to council table for a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby establishes an industrial development district, IDD, for property known as 1462 East Big Beaver, Troy, Michigan, 48084, 1950, parcel number 88-20-26126-028, in accordance with City Council Policy Resolution Number 2009-02-042. And be it further resolved that the city clerk shall forward a copy of this resolution to the State Tax Commission Treasury Building, PO Box 30471, Lansing, Michigan, 48909-7971.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Irwin, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? Mrs. Bartholomew, may we have the vote?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Our next public hearing is the granting of an industrial facilities exemption certificate for Metro Technologies LTD at 1462 East Big Beaver. Mr. LaCary, do you have anything else? Okay. Council, do you have any questions before I open the public hearing? Okay, the hearing is now open. Is there anyone here on this item that wishes to speak? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and return to the council table for a resolution. Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Well, I move the resolution granting an industrial facilities exemption certificate for Metro Technologies Limited, 1462 East Big Beaver, as printed.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our third public hearing is the establishment of an industrial development district for 1972 Meyer. Mr. LaCary will present.
Thank you. It's been a while. A pleasure to be here. This one is for Sulzer Medco, and it's a rather large expansion for them. We're very happy to have them staying here in Troy at 1972 Meyer. They're going to invest a little more than $3.5 million. Their plan is to add 12 jobs to the existing 38 that they already have. The terms of the council policy would grant them a seven-year abatement, and that's what staff will be recommending. Over the life of the seven years, their total taxes would be about—excuse me—$158,000, of which $50,000 would be city taxes. So as you can imagine, the cost is going to be slightly—their savings would be slightly less than $79,000 on their total tax bill, and $25,100 of that will be city taxes. They meet all the requirements of the state law and the city council policy, and staff, again, recommends the granting of the abatement for seven years, and the first step in that would be to establish the district at this address. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. LaCary?
Oh, I should mention, we also have representatives from that company here, too, if you should have any questions for them.
Okay. Thank you. Open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? We received all the documentation, of course, in our packets ahead, so we have all the information, but we'll close the public hearing and return to council for a resolution.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Resolved that the Troy City Council hereby establishes an industrial development district, IDD, for property known as 1972 Meyer, Troy, Michigan, 48084-7143, parcel number 88-20-32-226-024, in accordance with the City Council Policy Resolution Number 2009-02-042, and be it further resolved that the city clerk forward a copy of this resolution to the State Tax Commission Treasury Building, PO Box 30471, Lansing, Michigan, 48909-7971.
Support. Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Irwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the granting of an industrial facilities exemption certificate for Sulzer Medco Incorporated at 1972 Meyer. Mr. LaCary, you have something to—
I wanted to add something, because you always see me up here, and I mean, I am charged with making sure the application meets all the laws and the council policy resolution, and I put the packet together for you, but quite a bit of work is done by Pam Valentic and through Mark Miller's office, and they should get some credit for that. Unfortunately, the way the situation works out, it has my name and then my boss's name and then Mr. Zerlag's name, but you should be aware that they're doing quite a bit of work to bring these companies here and keep them here, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that, because we know it takes a lot of effort by many people to work on these items.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Before I read the resolution, I did want to—I did want to point out that this is a—this is a useful tool, and that a charge by council is to not only encourage redevelopment, to attract and retain, and the more we can see growth, and the growth, whether it be three jobs or whether it be many, many jobs, each one of those changes makes us all a better community.
I don't think I opened and closed the public hearing yet on this particular one. I did on the one before, so I better do that. I'll get in trouble here. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this item? Yes, sir. Come forward. Give us your name.
Good evening.
Yes.
My name is Kerry Lapierre, and I'm the general manager of Sulzer Medco's Troy, Michigan facility, and I'd like to thank the city council for what I hope will be their support on this matter. When I moved to Michigan to join Sulzer Medco in 1991, there were 90 persons employed at the facility. With steady layoffs and a diminishment of our business over the course of time, this dropped down to 29 jobs in 2003, with some improvement in our overall management and putting the right resources in the right places. We started this year with 38 persons. We've already brought on four of the 12 we plan to bring on to support this activity, and we'll have another hired by the end of the year, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Then I'll close the public hearing and return to the council table. Councilwoman Irwin, I think that you indicated you want to move the resolution.
And I'll read it, just because I think it's informative. We do have people here for it. Whereas, after due notice and proper hearing, the city council of the city of Troy on September 13, 2010, established an industrial development district, IDD, for property known as 1972 Meyer, Troy, Michigan, 48084-7143, parcel number 88-20-32-226-024, and whereas, an application has been submitted by Sulzer Medco Incorporated for an industrial facilities exemption certificate, IFEC, for personal property at 1972 Meyer, Troy, Michigan, 48084-7143, for seven years, and whereas after due notice—and after due and proper notice—and proper notice by the city clerk, the city council on September 13, 2010, held a public hearing, giving opportunity for comment by all taxing units as to the possibility that the granting of an industrial facilities exemption certificate, IFEC, for Sulzer Medco Incorporated at 1972 Meyer, Troy, Michigan, 48084-7143, may have the effect of substantially impeding the operation of the taxing unit or impairing the financial soundness of the taxing unit. Now therefore be it resolved that Troy City Council has found that the granting of an industrial facilities exemption certificate, IFEC, for Sulzer Medco Incorporated at 1972 Meyer, Troy, Michigan, 48084-7143, shall not substantially impede the operation of the city of Troy or the other taxing units, nor has it been found that the granting of the industrial facilities exemption certificate, IFEC, will impair the financial soundness of the city of Troy or the other taxing units which levy taxes on said property. And be it further resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves the application for an industrial facilities exemption certificate, IFEC, for Sulzer Medco Incorporated at 1972 Meyer, Troy, Michigan, 48084-7143, parcel number 88-20-32-226-024, for personal property for a term of seven years, contingent upon the execution of a letter agreement between the city of Troy and Sulzer Medco Incorporated and payment of the application fee established in accordance with Public Act 198 of 1974 as amended. And be it further resolved that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the letter agreement between the city of Troy and Sulzer Medco Incorporated, a copy of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting. And be it finally resolved that the city clerk is hereby authorized to complete the application and transmit same to the State Tax Commission Treasury Building, PO Box 30471, Lansing, Michigan, 48909-7971.
Do we have a second to the resolution?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Irwin and seconded by Councilwoman McGuinness that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Irwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Council, since we had our exec session meeting, which lasted up until when this meeting started, and we have seven people that wish to speak under public comment, I'm going to take a 10-minute break before we take the public comment at the request of some council members. I'll come back in 10 minutes. I'll come back in 10 minutes. Council is back in session. Thank you. We appreciate your indulgence. Our next matter on the agenda is public comment, and I remind people that this is limited to five minutes, but it is on postponed or regular business or consent agenda items or any other matter that is on your mind. And we'll begin with those that signed up here in the order in which they signed up. Our first speaker then will be Janice Daniels.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council management staff. I have to tell you that it really has become a disappointing display of government insensitivity where you have completely at all costs ignored any open discussion about equalizing the wages, the benefits, the perks, and the pleasures enjoyed by this city's public servants in comparison to the wages, benefits, perks, and pleasures enjoyed by the private sector. One of those simple pleasures enjoyed by the private sector is open access to our public library on the days and during the hours that the working class most has available to them, and you continue to threaten to completely close down our library even though people on both sides of this issue across the board agree that a city's library is a place of enrichment for children of all ages. And the irony was not lost to an interesting lady who I met at the post office over this past weekend when she reminded me that in the year 2006, that is, four short years ago, this city government spent untold taxpayer dollars in a failed attempt to thwart the relocation of a private business at the corner of Big Beaver and Rochester Road based upon the premise that this particular restaurant would not enrich our children's lives in any way. Where's the perspective? And now with this new library taxing authority scheme, you have a group of concerned citizens doing the dirty work for you, but the fact remains that our taxes would go up, and in addition to that, we would have yet another layer of government bureaucracy, a separate library taxing authority with five new government-appointed board members. No matter how you look at it, the city is hinging the fate of our library upon your getting in one way or another your hands back into the pockets of the taxpayers of this fine city. And if we did vote a separate library taxing authority upon ourselves and the finances of the library are no longer in the city's budget, what are you going to do with the over $4 million in savings that you'll achieve? Are you going to reduce your budget and return the money to the people, or are you just going to squander those additional taxpayer dollars to support your bloated compensation packages? This seems similar to the way that the taxpayers voted again and again and again, not to have a new high school built. And what do we have today? A brand-new high school. And now what are we attempting to do to fill our schools? Open enrollment. What is your goal? Where is your perspective? Don't you understand that your decisions based upon retribution, self-preservation, and self-aggrandizement are part of the problem when you use these types of devious tactics against the will of the people? Now it's being said that this new library initiative will only cost us $99 per year. Last February, you were saying it was only going to cost us $38 a year. So now we're expected to agree to a tripling of costs because you have doubled up on your threats to close the library? You continue to try to scare the people into this new tax or that new law or another regulation or another layer of government bureaucracy. The time has come when you need to understand that many of us have had enough. We want you to pare down, and we want you to scale back. And when I say "you," I mean government employees at all levels in all departments. Come back to the people with a transparent program of wage, benefit, and perks equalization between the public and the private sector before you come to us for more money. And please use your influence to stop the media campaign to scare the people or threaten them with the loss of our most valued assets, that is, safety and education. We see through these veiled attempts to capitalize on our fears, and it isn't very complimentary. I say vote no on all four tax increase proposals. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Erin Stahl.
Good evening. Good evening. This is just to keep me in track.
It goes on.
Yes.
Thank you.
My name is Erin Stahl, and it's really nice this evening to see so many familiar faces from when I was on the city council in St. Clair Shores, from M M L and S E M C O G, so it's really nice to have you be here this evening. I'm here to talk about the library, but first I wanted to tell you that I've contributed a lot to the city of Troy, but the city of Troy has contributed so much more to me and my life. When I was in high school, I was one of the teen girls over at Sax Fifth Avenue censoring the clothing in the basement there. I also got my master's degree in finance over at Walsh College here in Troy, and when the recording studio for the blind and dyslexic was still open, I was a volunteer reader. And when I came here weekly, I visited the Troy Library because you guys had the best books. And when you were still part of the co-op, whenever I was looking up the books, all the books that I wanted were here in Troy. They weren't in Sterling Heights or Fraser or even St. Clair Shores. They were here in Troy. Finally, I'm a volunteer treasurer of the Libertarian Party of Michigan, which is headquartered here in Troy. So in my weekly visits, I was really shocked to hear that the library was closing, so I read everything that I possibly could about it. And as a paid member of the Libertarian Party of Michigan, I am a taxpayer in Troy, yet I don't get a vote because I don't live here. I'm going to speak and let my voice, my past experience as a city councilwoman, and my budget and millage knowledge be my voice and be my vote. I don't have time to go into detail tonight, but you, the public, and also the friends of the library, from what I've read, are being misled and given some misinformation in what I call emotional hoo-ha. The millage really isn't necessary. Why? There's four things that we really should start looking at. The answer is to save the library without a tax increase. The first answer, ironically, are the books in the Troy Library. Using the Dewey Decimal System, you can look in the first bookshelf, 021, 022, 027. I've checked out about 10 books on the subject, and one book has 13 steps, a 13-step plan on how to do things on a zero budget. It talks about private libraries, how they make things work. It even talked about public libraries, what they did to service the community and stay alive in the depression. All those answers are in Troy's library. You have great books. The second answer to start looking at lies in getting some of the huge wages in line with the private libraries. When I couldn't find the detailed library budget information within the library, I'd spent more than $150 to FOIA it. My library in St. Clair Shores, we actually have this information available free to the public. I had to pay $150 for it. But, you know, one of the amazing disgusting facts was one of the wages someone was being paid $100,000. That's crazy. Third answer lies in volunteer donations. Troy Library has about, what is it, 600,000 visits. I try to get my books overdue so I can pay a little bit. I don't mind donating a dollar each time I come in there. You could have something like this, anytime someone comes in, you donate it. There is something against donations. I mean, would you refuse a donation from the Bell Gates Foundation? I think not. Fourth, the answer lies not in a tax millage increase, but in the library, just fulfilling on its own mission statement. Read about it. It's in the library. The mission statement's amazing, and they can fulfill on it by using their intelligence and their dedication to the community, not on scare tactics, which this millage, everything that I've read about, is a bunch of scare tactics. If anybody wants any of my information, my name is Erin Stahl. My phone number is area code 586-774-8181. Thank you so much.
Next, we'll hear from Rhonda Hendrickson. Oh, we're going to hear from Rob Hendrickson. Okay. No, that's fine. Both names are listed here. Good evening, Rob.
Counsel, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to say just a couple of things. First, before I get into what I wrote down, I do want to say that every time I hear someone say that the people that are working for the city are not taking pay cuts or not seeing benefits cut, it kind of grinds my teeth because I know quite a few people that work for the city, and I hear over and over and over again that they have seen their wages cut drastically. We have seen huge numbers of people laid off from the city. So when people say that people in the public sector are not suffering, that really makes me a little angry. The first thing I wanted to say, though, after that, is congratulations to Mr. Cowherd and his team responsible for Patriot Week. I think it's a great way to highlight the fundamental principles of our nation. I commend them for it. I've been reading lately the book 1776 by David McCullough, and his account of the literate and educated men who framed the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution speaks volumes to the importance of education and literacy. I'd also like to honor my father, Dr. Jack Hendrickson, who was a lifelong Michigan resident, decorated veteran of World War II. He was and is a true patriot who fought for freedom. It's his birthday today. He's 86 years old. Unfortunately, he's been afflicted with Alzheimer's for a number of years now. The thing that was most crushing for him was the loss of the ability to read and comprehend. He was a lifelong dedicated man who dedicated his life to education and literacy. A library card was probably his most prized possession. He went to the library at least two or three times a week. He was a voracious reader. He instilled a love of books and learning in all of his children, and he is a very, very big reason why I am firmly in the camp of supporting our library in every way possible and supporting the citizens to save the Troy Public Library in their efforts to keep it open. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Edward Campan.
Thank you, Mayor. And hello, council members.
Feel free to adjust them. There you go.
A little bit.
No, just that side. The other one's for light.
Okay. I used to speak in on this side of the benches. I'm here to talk to you today about saving our library and how we can keep it open, and more specifically, how we can do so without a new tax. Early this year in the dead of winter, city council tried to pass a tax increase. They thought the public might be caught sleeping, but they were wrong. The public responded in great numbers and voted it down, and the outcry was based upon the excessive spending happening here in Troy. Today, our excessive spending continues. Yes, there have been some cutbacks, but not the right cutbacks. Citizens don't want bigger government. Citizens don't want bigger government. In fact, according to a recent Rasmussen poll, 66% of U.S. voters prefer a smaller government with fewer services and lower taxes over a more active government with more services and higher taxes. Troy's pro-tax camp wants a tax increase, and since they couldn't get one back in February, they decided to keep on spending but threatened to close the library and hope citizens would do exactly what they did, which is pull a petition together to try and create a new library entity and to pull the library out from the city council's hands, because you can't be trusted with the library anymore. You've already decided to kill it. Well, this works for the city to free up the funds that were being used for the library. So in essence, our city will get the benefits of a giant slush fund where once there was a library in our budget. This is not right. We as citizens expect a library, and we don't need a tax and new board to get it. We don't need any of the four petitions asking for more money. We just need the library. People do have a choice, and I'm willing to work to make it happen. I'm bringing my new petition drive to the people, and the people are responding favorably so far. We need the Friends of the Library with No New Taxes, which is the name of an organization we put together, and I've got petition forms with empty lines on it if anybody wants to sign. Several hundred, we don't need 50 signatures to, to save our library with no taxes, but what we're gonna do is petition that the city maintain our library, and it's gonna take over 2,000 signatures to do so. So we're gonna work for it. If anybody has any questions or would like to request some forms to fill out, you can contact me at 248-376-4735, or email me at edcampan@gahu.com. I've got clipboards and petition forms for anyone, and I'll be around if anybody wants to sign here tonight.
Are you done?
Yes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Thomas Burke.
I have a simple request of counsel. As the election's coming up and the library is becoming a, a big issue, and the rumors are floating everywhere as to what these multiple proposals will mean, if the city could publish a fax, a list of questions and answers along the lines of the legal aspects of the creation of this new authority. My understanding is this is a separate entity, and the questions are, you know, everybody assumes, is assuming that this library will automatically legally transfer to this new entity. I don't know if that's true or not. Or does this library authority with the ability to raise eight or 10 million dollars a year, because I think that a 164 library can raise two mills, can they not go out and issue bonds and debt and go and build a new library at the place of their choice and ignore the Troy Library? I've heard that is a true statement. The books in the library of the Troy Library could then remain closed, and several years from now, potentially, a new library comes into existence. It would be really interesting for us all to truly understand what will transpire should one of these proposals or all of these proposals pass. Right now, people are making assumptions which cannot all be true, but it would be nice to know what will happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Peters. Mr. Peters?
Yeah, first of all, I want to say I don't think you're all a bunch of crooks or out for self-aggrandizement. I think you're mostly folks who come here and, for the most part, probably aren't paid very well, and you come here out of public service and to put up with a lot, the amount of grief sometimes you have to put up with. I commend you for that. I wanted to talk a little bit about the economy. I think that our country should try to lower interest rates a little bit on our credit cards, and I also think that we should spend some money on what is known as more money on, to bail out our governments, again, like about 50 billion for our city and county governments. And I also feel that we should spend some money on crop rotation and enhancing of our river systems. And the reason I'm saying that is because I, I am concerned, I'm hearing people more and more talking about the lakes and how they're lowering and what, what effect the glaciers might have on them. That, to me, is a big concern, and, and I, I think that we can't, we can't continually turn our heads at this all the time. I mean, it's just something that's there, and I think we have to deal with it. As far as for the women's talking about why government spending or why government, as opposed to private, the reason is, is that basically Republican economics, which wants to promote private sector, is in fact because the effect is to keep the rich people so rich is actually taking away competition in the marketplace. Now, according, from my view, you know, the more spending and the more in, in proper areas where we could promote a more efficient government, then I think that that would be a, a much better approach and a better step to take. So that's basically what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Rhonda Hendrickson. Good evening.
Counsel? Can you hear? I would like to take this opportunity to set the record straight. It is, is public record that on May 10th of this year, funding for the Troy Public Library was eliminated. On July 1, 2011, the Troy Public Library will be closed. There is no money in the budget for the library to operate. Forty weeks from today, people will lose their jobs, and the citizens of this community will lose their library. The citizens to save the Troy Public Library are ordinary people, parents, students, seniors, and business owners, that have come together with the common purpose of preventing the closure of our library. We support Proposal One, the only proposal that will prevent our library from closing, and we urge all citizens to vote yes on Proposal One. How does anyone argue against literacy for children? Helping students with homework, keeping seniors connected in a digital world? How does a community turn away from assisting people who are unemployed, get workforce training, and get back to work? Troy must not turn our backs on our children and our neighbors. A 2007 study by the Urban Library Council states that "public libraries build a community's capacity for economic stability and resiliency." And because of that, we cannot afford to let our library close. Troy has always prided, has always been a city that prided itself on its blue-ribbon schools and its high value for education. Many families, including myself, moved here for those reasons. If Troy does not have a public library, we will no longer be an attractive place for families and new businesses to locate. We will be viewed as a city in decline. Traveling in Upper Michigan a week ago, I visited a library in a one-blinker-light village. The library staff knew of the impending closure of our nationally-ranked library. It was chilling to hear them talk about our city. Troy should be the envy of communities, not the subject of someone's pity. For the cost of a non-resident library card in a neighboring city, we can choose to invest in our own community and protect our own future. There are those that would try to turn our library into a political football. They've created proposals that aim to confuse voters and put our library's future in danger. They plagiarize our ballot. They use numbers that are meant to confuse. They dupe library supporters to get their signatures and then walk away satisfied with their dirty trick. As Al Brooks Patterson has recently said of an alleged attempt to deceive voters on a ballot, "These are not college election pranks. These are deliberate perversions of the democratic process." Here in Troy, that deception puts our community at risk. Voters must reject these bogus proposals and vote yes on Proposal Only. If the people behind these proposals want everyone to vote no on them, why did they put them on the ballot to begin with? Why aren't they at the microphone? There's always an attempt to deflect, confuse, and tamp down citizens' initiatives. Why is that? We're trying to save the library, and we have no other purpose than that. There's nothing nefarious about what the citizens to save the Troy Public Library are doing. We have been out front from the beginning. Let's dispel some myths. First of all, there is no leftover extra money in the budget. When the library item is cut, the line is out. There is no money in there. It's gone. There's no money hanging around in there. So let's not talk about some $4 million money that's somewhere to be used somewhere else. It is cut out of the budget. There's no layer of government here. This is an elected board of trustees that are citizens that are nonpartisan and unpaid. We're putting the public back in public library. That's what we're doing. And Rochester Hills has an independent public library and has been since 1924. It runs like a business, and it's efficient, it's accountable, and it's flexible. Seventeen of 21 neighboring communities have dedicated millages. Why is that? Because a library needs a foundation of funding. It is not a volunteer organization, and it is not an organization that can work on donations in a box. Our millage rate is currently 9.2. It's one of the lowest in the region. Clausen's millage rate is 18, and they are adding on to their library, and their community has voted to support their library with a millage. I think that the citizens of Troy want a library. I think that we would like to have a library that has a dedicated fund, where the funds are 100% dedicated to the operation and services of the library, and Proposal One is going to do that. We urge all Troy citizens to get the facts at www.savetroylibrary.com. Proposal One will keep the doors of learning open for our children. Proposal One will keep seniors connected to their grandkids, and the library is an essential resource we cannot afford to close at a time when Troy families need it most. We're asking Troy residents to please vote yes on Proposal One November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Lorraine Hamble.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. While I spend a great deal of time preserving the distant past for this community, I also recognize that history is made every day and that it is important sometimes to pause and to recognize recent events that leave an indelible mark on our community. In the last nine months, the city of Troy has lost four volunteers who each contributed over 40 years of service to our community. Each man easily gave over 10,000 hours of his time, his talents, and personal financial donations to build important institutions in our city. Don Anderly was a proud World War II veteran who died in November, having volunteered at the Troy Museum for over 40 years. He was a consistent sponsor or helper at the Historical Society's Hand and Eyeshow and was at every public event greeting our patrons. In June, we lost Bill Price. Without a doubt, Bill was a quintessential volunteer who served on numerous boards and commissions and organizations as a public resident in Troy. Most notably, as was noted earlier this evening, he was a charter member of the Troy Rotary. He was also a proud and distinguished member of the Troy Historical Commission and a benefactor of the Troy Heritage Campaign to expand the museum. Bill also purchased and garaged Troy's first ambulance. He was very proud of that. Just recently, I attended the memorial service of Lloyd Stage Jr., who embraced his father's commitment to our parks. I knew Lloyd as a longtime volunteer at the Troy Nature Center, there every year, standing out in the cold while we made maple syrup. He also served as a volunteer firefighter at Station 3. Finally, last Friday, I attended the memorial service for Al Holberg, who passed away at 98 and a half years old. He was, by his own admission, a recycled teenager. Al worked on the Caswell House when it was moved to the museum in 1968, and he never stopped working. He worked at museum events, greeting patrons, and attending Historical Society board meetings until he was 97. Don, Bill, Lloyd, and Al, and many others like them, have given Troy their hands, have given their energy, and, most important, their vision, and we have all benefited from it. And we in Troy will miss them. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those that signed up for public comment. Did I see Mr. Cowherd's hand? Yes.
I wasn't intending to do this, but I was struck by some of the presentations earlier tonight of those who feel like they would like to have something for nothing. In case you didn't know, we had a 12% reduction in property tax values this year, which means it's 12% less revenue. And next year, we'll have another probably 12% if Brooks Patterson's office is right. And all of a sudden, there's a huge hole in the budget, and you can't make something out of nothing. It just, there's no slush fund, there's no funny business going on. You have two choices. You either have police or you have the library. Those are the two largest operations that we have. And when it comes down to it, I cannot imagine that my 32 years in this city and the heritage that we leave behind would be to have no library. It just is beyond my comprehension. I urge everyone to vote yes on Prop One. It's the only one that counts. Proposition One. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those that signed up to speak. So we'll go to the next part of the agenda, which is response, a reply to public comment. And before calling on the city manager or the city attorney, I hope you folks will stay for this part because it pertains to what was been said. Please? Okay. Thank you. Except Susan has someplace to go. First of all, I'd like to say that the city council and the city administration has nothing to do with the petitions and the proposals that are on this ballot. It was a city, a citizen initiative that began, and a proposal was put forward, and then three other proposals were submitted. They were submitted to our city clerk, who certified the names only. They were presented to the county. The county puts them on the ballot as they were presented. They are not allowed to change what was on the petitions. So I want it very clear that this is not a city council nor a city management initiative that are on the ballot. It is a citizen petition initiative that is on the ballot. So I urge everyone to make sure that they know that as a factual information. They can check multiple sources if they wish to have that verified. Mrs. Bloom, I'm going to ask a question because we had a resident ask for the city attorney to, the city to put out something about the legalities of this. And since we are not involved in this, what is our position on that? Mrs. Bloom? I'm putting something out.
Mayor, if, if council chooses, just as you've had informational brochures sent out before, you can expend money to do that. It's in order to educate the voters. However, whatever's put out has to be absolutely neutral. You cannot take a position in favor of or against it, and council would need to... And counsel would need to approve that expenditure. Again, it would be to educate the voters only.
And even though this is not a counsel initiative, we would still be allowed to put something out? I think that would be confusing to the voters if something came from the city of Troy with regard to this when it is not the city of Troy that is putting forward this proposal. Any of the proposals, in fact.
You have the ability, if you would like to educate the voters, you have the ability to expend the money to do that as long as it is neutral. It is not in favor of or against any of the proposals. So if you wanted to, even though it is not a city-initiated proposal, you could provide impartial information to the voters.
Counsel members, is there anyone else that would like a clarification on anything that was made during public comment?
Madam Mayor.
Counselwoman Belltrame.
I heard some things tonight that I had never heard before. And quite honestly, it, not only does multiple proposals having a potential to pass scare me, but it never occurred to me that in the foreseeable future, the library would stay closed while a separate board raised money, put out bonds, called for bonds to build a new building. I would like, I know that you've been doing some research on 164 districts. If you would share that with us in memorandum form, I would appreciate that. I think for us, as we get asked those kinds of questions around town, it would be helpful. And if you put it in our packet, then it becomes a matter of public record. I would appreciate it if that could be done.
Anyone else? Thank you. We'll continue on then with our agenda. And our next item is regular business. And the first item under regular business is a confirmation of the appointment to the Parks and Rec Board. If we could have a resolution for that. Mayor Protem Fleming?
It is resolved that the Troy City Council hereby confirms the appointment of the following person to serve on the boards and committees as indicated. Parks and Recreation Board Gary Hoff, School District Representative, with term expiring 7/31/2011.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Fleming, seconded by Counselwoman Kerwin, that we confirm the appointment of Gary Hoff, Troy School District Representative, school board member, to the term expiring 7/31/2011, to the Parks and Rec Board. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Counselmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselwoman Belltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item I3 is a request for closed session, and on the table is a yellow sheet that should be what it is and not what is just in the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Counselwoman Belltrame?
It is resolved that the Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E, pending litigation, Raquel Chidiak v. City of Troy at All Case Evaluation, as permitted by MCL 15.268, and C, Strategy for Labor Negotiations, and as permitted by MCL 15.268H, MCL 15.243G.
Support.
Moved by Counselwoman Belltrame and seconded by Mayor Protem Fleming. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselwoman Belltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the designation of voting delegate and alternates to the annual business meeting of the National League of Cities.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Counselwoman Kerwin?
It is resolved that Troy City Council hereby designates Robin Belltrame as voting delegate. And I don't believe anyone else intends to go. Maureen McGinnis, would you be going?
No, I'm not going.
To cast votes of the city of Troy at the annual business meeting of the National League of Cities to be held Saturday, December 4, 2010, in Denver, Colorado. Support.
Do we have a second?
Maureen.
Counselwoman McGinnis? Moved by Counselwoman Kerwin, seconded by Counselwoman McGinnis, that we designate Robin Belltrame as the voting delegate for the vote, cast the two votes for the city of Troy at the annual business meeting of the National League of Cities, Saturday, December 4, 2010, in Denver, Colorado. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Counselwoman Belltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, I5 is the adoption of the Troy City Council Code of Ethics, which was a green item at the last week. Do we have a resolution?
Mayor?
Counselman Slater?
It is resolved that the Troy City Council hereby adopts the City Council Code of Ethics as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by Counselman Slater, seconded by Counselwoman Belltrame, that we approve the resolution as printed in red. Discussion? Counselwoman Belltrame?
Just a housekeeping detail. I don't know that we need an amendment to the resolution, but the last item on both, in both documents, is in a different type size. And that's the kind of thing that bothers me. Everyone knows that. I'd like it cleaned up before it's finally printed.
All set? Okay. Then could we have the vote, Mrs. Bartholomew, with the?
Counselmember Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselwoman Belltrame?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we go to the consent agenda. Are there any council members, any items?
Before you move on, there was an item placed on the table in addition to the designation of the voting alternate.
Yes. Could we have a resolution? No, it's not the schedule. It is travel?
Correct. Expenses.
I saw it in an email. I don't see it here.
J1F.
Pardon?
4F. Is it 4F? The addition.
Mayor? You'll need to suspend your rules. And then if you would like, I can read the resolution to you.
Okay. I'll move to suspend the rules. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Mayor Protem Fleming, that we suspend the rules to add this additional resolution. Discussion? The vote on suspension? Mrs. Bartholomew?
Counselmember Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselwoman Belltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. And would you read us the resolution? And then we, or do you have it? Oh, okay. Counselwoman Belltrame?
Madam Mayor, I would move that we add to the standard purchasing resolution, so it would be J4ABCFF. It is resolved that the council members are authorized to attend the National League of Cities, NLC Congress of Cities and Exposition November 30 through December 4, 2010, in Denver, Colorado, in accordance with accounting procedures of the city of Troy.
Support.
Moved by Counselwoman Belltrame, seconded by Mayor Protem Fleming, that we approve the resolution as read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew? This is to add it. It'll come up in under J4F. Right? Okay.
Counselwoman McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselwoman Belltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now on choir, on the consent agenda, anyone have an item they wish to have removed? Exempted? Okay. Counselwoman Kerwin?
It is resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Please?
Day.
Day. Second.
I'm sorry. We have our new system. You'd think I could hear that. Okay. Moved by Counselwoman Kerwin, seconded by Counselman Slater, that we approve all the consent agenda items with this vote. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Counselmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Counselwoman Belltrame?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Under memorandums and future council agenda items, we had two items. Does anyone wish to either make a comment or question on those?
Madam Mayor.
Counselwoman Belltrame?
I read very carefully the organizational restructuring proposal for ICMA. And I'm a little concerned. I'm a little concerned because it starts with 150 years of municipal experience on the team. And if you look at our city manager and his direct reports, we can match that. I'm a little concerned because it's somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000 of unbudgeted funds. And I saw this afternoon that there's money in the capital fund to move out of local roads, but I don't think that that's what we are charged to do. Our roads are falling apart, and I hesitate to move that kind of money. So I have those concerns and would like to have an opportunity to sit down and discuss this proposal as a council before it came before us as a vote.
Would we have an opportunity to put a study session on the next meeting, at the end of the meeting? Is that what you're proposing?
I don't care when, but I am not going to be able to, in good conscience, approve this proposal without a discussion. It's too much money.
On the 20th, Mr. Sirlight, would there be an opportunity to have this as a study item?
Absolutely. In fact...
I think that would be a good move.
I could also have Craig Rapp from ICMA out of Washington come down and answer any questions directly. This, of course, is in response to a request made by city council for me to secure an independent third-party review of the most efficient and effective way that we can streamline our organization. Much like an extension that we had with Mr. Dick Carlisle for planning and zoning, code enforcement, engineering, and building inspection. After we ran the table on those departments, Mr. Carlisle's expertise in that area was pretty much expunged. And so I was asked to try to find another consulting firm for an independent third-party to take a look at what we're doing. It's a lot of money, but we believe the upfront cost will be, have a return on the investment if we implement the recommendations that we think will be coming down the pike.
Counsel, what is your pleasure as regarding having someone from ICMA come to our study session? Do you wish to study it first and then hear from the individual? Or do you wish to have the individual come?